Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a proclamation to start it off. This is a Betsy Ryder, right? Welcome. City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary, and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designation September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Kamala M. Leonhard, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week. And urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this 14th day of September in the year of 2021. There you go. Thank you. Did you want to say something real quick? No? Okay, that's fine. You don't almost have to say anything. Okay. Old business. Consideration of previous meeting minutes. Fellow commissioners, did we have any questions? Concerns? Got some minutes?
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the minutes from the August 24th, 2021 regular meeting and the September 7th, 2021 special meeting.
Second.
Okay. Let's go around the bend, starting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four to zero. Okay. Next up, second consideration ordinance. 8174 rezoning 410 South Second Street from I-1 to CBD. It's just a roll call, so anybody have any questions or concerns on that?
Is this the one for the, what, the CHS supply?
The C-N-H?
Yeah.
C-N-H Plumbing.
C-N-H Plumbing.
Yeah. Mayor, for him and commissioners, I'd just like to mention that this was presented at the March 24th meeting. And it was placed on first consideration. There haven't been any changes to it since then. And so if you have any questions, otherwise it is a roll call.
March or August?
What did I say?
March.
It was August. It wasn't, okay.
All right, no problem.
Okay. So just need a roll call, starting with Commissioner Price here.
Aye.
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 Okay. Four to zero. New business. So that would be public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. Did I have anyone? Okay, Terry Lewis, Mashburn? Yeah.
Terry Lewis, Mashburn, Leavenworth County Register of Deeds, 300 Walnut Street. Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, Counselor, thank you for your service to the first city. I do appreciate it very much. The FBI says that one of the fastest growing white collar crimes is title theft. This is where someone comes in to the Register of Deeds office, they'll file a bogus deed, and then try to title steal someone's property. And in our defense of that action, it is the time from when that deed is filed until they are discovered that they get all their nefarious actions done. So we offer a program, it's called Property Fraud Alert. Very straightforward. Number one, it's free. There's absolutely no cost to a citizen to come in and subscribe for this notification service. It's a partnership with Fiddler Technologies. That's the company that we do all of our daily recordings with. So any of the subscribers who ask to be on this list will have their name compared to all of my daily activity. If there's a hit, you're notified immediately. It doesn't delineate between legal and illegal activity. For instance, if you came in and filed a transfer on death deed, that would be a valid document, and you would get a notification on that. It's when you receive a notification and you don't recognize it and don't know what it is, then you need to immediately act. You can contact the loan organization, the mortgage company that you have, contact your attorney, and also file a police report. So the power in this is that the more people that are signed up for this, it actually has exponential protection. Because as more and more people are aware of this program and subscribe, the word starts to kind of filter out there. And the bad guys are like, "Yee, better stay away from Leavenworth County, you're gonna get caught." And so there are no marketing calls, there are no marketing emails. It is strictly a notification. There will be two emails that you receive. One is that you're subscribed, and it comes from propertyfraudalert.com. And the second one will be from myself, where I give you some details. If you ever do receive a property fraud alert, here's what it would look like, and here's the actions that I suggest you take right away. So anyone who's in the audience and wants to subscribe, it's a 30-second form that you fill out. I can take that back, and you'll be protected tomorrow morning. Anyone who is watching online and wants to take advantage of this, the Register of Deeds office is 913-684-0424. You can also find us on the website, leavenworthcounty.gov, under the Register of Deeds office. Just call up, and we will be happy to subscribe to you. The last thing I'd like to share is the fun part about my job is the documents that we find and discover. So has anybody ever heard of Buffalo Bill Cody? Here's his signature on one of our documents when he sold a parcel of Leavenworth County land. And I have a display in my office on all the detail, if you'd like to stop by and see it. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your service to us. I appreciate it.
Ms. Mashburn, just real quickly, can people do that online, or they have to call you, or?
They can do it online. I like them to call in because a lot of times there's questions, and then we'll be able to answer it. But yes, there's a certain population they don't trust online, so they need the human-
But it is possible to do it online.
It is. It is possible, so.
Just drill down on the Register of Deeds office on the county website, leavenworthcounty.gov?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great information.
Nobody asked this, but yes, we've had to deal with it in the last couple of months. We've had alerts and reports, so it is active.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have any other public comment? Oh, okay. So let's go on to public hearing. Public hearing on unsafe or dangerous structures.
Madam Mayor, I move that we open a public hearing to discuss unsafe or dangerous structures.
I'll second it.
Okay. Go around the bend, Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four to zero. Open meeting. Open public hearing. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Structures that are determined to be in an unsafe and dangerous physical condition, or that are abandoned, or that have a blighting influence, do pose a threat to the safety and welfare of the city. So to address those structures, annually, we compile a list of properties to be considered for potential removal through demolition. So for this list for 2021, the city commission first reviewed a list of 15 structures at the June 15th city commissions meeting, and reached a consensus at that time to proceed with placing 13 of those structures on a list for potential demolition. Owners were first sent notification on July 9th of possible demolition of their property, and they were given a copy of a remediation agreement that staff developed, listing all of the items that would need to be completed in order to bring the property into compliance. The commission then passed a resolution setting the public hearing for tonight on July 26th. After that time, another notification was provided to the owners of each property as required by statute via certified mail, posting on the structure, and publication in the Leavenworth Times. Another thing that we did this year that we had discussed previously, we sent a notification to all property owners within 200 feet of each of these properties, just notifying them that a property in their neighborhood was being considered for potential demolition in order to give them a chance to provide comments on a structure that potentially has a blighting influence on their neighborhood and on their own property. So we'll go ahead and move on. And just to kind of recap, since it's a little bit of a review every time we go through this process, we'll go through each structure one by one, all give an update on it. If there's an owner representative here, we can hear from them. The commission can discuss, reach a consensus on each property individually before we move on to the next one, and then we'll have a motion at the end, once we've gotten through all of them.
Okay.
Ms. Hurley, I have a question.
Yes.
Was either late last year or early this year, we had some discussion between you and city manager and the commission in terms of some procedures or steps that we were at least considering to do a little bit differently than in the past? Can you shed, did we change a few things? And if so, could you just highlight the most important ones?
Sure. So the biggest thing that we changed was providing the notification to property owners within 200 feet of each property. There were a few other items that we discussed, like having property owners provide a financial means, that type of thing. And between discussing myself and the city manager and the city attorney, we determined that some of those items were just not legally feasible for us to ask of property owners. So we've refined our internal SOP a little bit, but the biggest change that you'll see really is that notification to the property owners within 200 feet of each property. And then just as we move forward, staff will make sure that we're providing consistent, you know, information on each property, since a lot of times we'll see them back multiple times with extensions and such. So those were really the biggest.
With regard to these properties, did we get any, for those homeowners within 200 feet, did you get any feedback? Did your office get any feedback, or just in general?
We didn't get any actual feedback. We got a lot of questions from people, I think confused that we were going to take down their property.
Okay.
But no, we didn't actually get any feedback about any of the properties that are actually on the demolition list. Yeah.
I could just add a little bit. You know, part of the issues with the financial matter on this is that you do have to, regardless of financial ability, provide an opportunity to cure as part of this hearing. So, you know, a lot of times we hear, we speak colloquially of properties being on the demolition list and being put on there tonight. What you're approving tonight would be the demolition if the cures are not made. You do have to provide a reasonable amount of time for the improvements to be made to the properties, the failure of which then would trigger the city's ability to do the demolition list. But looking at the statutes, you know, for example, say, well, we do not believe you as a property owner have the financial ability to do this, therefore we move to immediately demolition it. In my opinion, that would not be authorized by statute, because you do have to provide a time by statute within repair time, which repairs must be made.
Right.
Mr. Waters, when you said you have to give them a time to cure the property, has that time already been given since we gave them notification by certified mail approximately, what, 90 days ago?
No, you gave notice of a hearing tonight.
Okay.
You're giving the, yeah, you just gave the notice tonight as to why they should not be given the opportunity to cure, the failure of which would then trigger your ability to raise the property.
And the opportunity to cure, is it delineated how many days that should be?
That can-
I believe, the way the resolution is worded, and I believe this language comes directly from the statute, they are, unless they are given an extension of 30, 60, 90, as we discuss sometimes, they have 10 days from the passage of this resolution to commence repair. So it's that 10 days, and then after which is when we start our process. So I think, David can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the timeframe that's stipulated that-
The resolution fixes a reasonable time within which the repair removal shall be commenced, and then has a statement that a failure to commence it within that reasonable time could be caused for you.
Within that 10 days.
Then they must diligently prosecute it to completion. And then that comes when we come back to you to say, here's the latest status of the properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so starting off, the first property is 619 Ottawa. This is a single-family home. The date of last water service was on July 15th, 2020. There has been no change to it. Staff has not had any contact from the owner. I do believe the owner is here in attendance tonight, wishing to speak to it.
Okay. Would the owner like to come forward on the 619 Ottawa?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Board. Yeah, I'm the owner of that property there. It's a-
In your name and address?
Taiwan Pool, 619 Ottawa.
Okay.
Mr. Pool, are you living in that house?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
There is, everything is operable in the home. There is running water there. It was after the date that she mentioned that the water was turned on. There's been utilities there for probably the last five months, maybe. There's been a lot of changes. I got pictures on my phone, I don't have them on the computer, but that's about it. I mean, I'm just asking that it not be on the dangerous building list to get demolished. It's fully functional. It has a security alarm, electricity, running water.
Ms. Hurley or Mr. Waters, quick question. If a house is inhabited, we normally do not have them on the list. Is that correct?
Right. And so I'm not sure when water service was restored. When we checked the water service on this one, back in June, when we put together the list, we were told by the water department that the last water service was in July of last year.
Yeah, it was September when it was restored.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
It was restored in September.
Of?
This month.
This September.
This month?
The fact of occupancy in and of itself does not necessarily mean that a structure is not unsafe or dangerous.
Can I add that it was stated that the windows, I needed to do the windows and put windows and doors in, and that's what I've done. You can look at the picture, that picture there compared to the last picture that was a-
Oh, right. And I drove by it today. I mean, I noticed when I drove by, there was a light on in the house. So that's why I was questioning, I was like, well, someone must be living there or working on it.
Yeah, I work a lot of hours. I work at the airport, KCI, Bill KCI, and so it's been kind of slow, but it's coming together. I started on doing the interior upstairs first, but, you know, after I got notification here, I jumped to the outside.
How long did you live here?
For the last week of July, since the last week of July.
Sir, on the list of problems that we have in front of us, there was the roof replaced, slash repair, entire roof, siding replaced, repair, all damaged exterior walls and siding, soffits and eaves, replaced, repair, all damaged soffits and eaves, and then the windows and doors, as you just mentioned. The paint on that, you know, I think that would be gotten to in normal order, once these other things are taken care of. But Ms. Hurley, are these still, I mean, those to me are major problems with the property. Do they, in terms of the roof, I mean, what's the status with the roof?
No, it's one area in the front, yeah, right there. I bought shingles for that, I just haven't done it. It'd probably take me two or three hours, maybe, to do that.
So the roof, the siding, the soffits and eaves, and the windows and doors, those problems could be taken care of in the next 30 days, 60 days? What?
30 days, yes.
Or if we gave them, yeah, 60 days would be November 9th meeting.
My, yeah, a lot of times our constituents and citizens come and say 30 days, and, you know, the way life works and everything, it normally takes a little bit longer than that. But I would probably be amenable to 60 days, particularly since you're living in it.
Right, since you're living in it makes a big difference.
Yeah, you're worried.
Fellow commissioners, if the gentleman said 30 days, I think we should go 30 days. We know how this process works. We've all been through here. We say 30 days, or we say 60 days. 60 days comes, we go like that, add, add, add. Quite often, we've heard things go on for over a year before we finally have to pull the plug. Mr. Pool says he can do it in 30 days? Let's see what he does in 30 days. And I believe if he's living there, he's probably gonna do it. I admire him that he's living there. Do you live there alone, or do you have a family, sir?
Well, I have a family, but it's split. I live there by myself right now.
Okay.
I'm through a divorce.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Price here, don't we want to be straight across the board when it comes to the other properties?
Possibly, yeah. This is the first one. Aye?
We would suggest 60 days if we're gonna be giving extensions. That generally gives people a chance to make some good progress, and so I believe we've given a date.
November 9th.
November 9th would be the first regular meeting after 60 days from here. So we would suggest 60 days kind of being the starting point for any extensions discussed tonight.
I don't mind giving 60 days. I mean, and the thing is, if you get it done in 30, that's wonderful. The fact that you're living there makes a big difference, you know, because you want to live there, and you've already gotten quite a bit done, but you still have quite a bit to do. So, I mean, within that 60 days, I would believe that you would have it all done.
I would, I promise you that.
Let me ask another question of Ms. Hurley. The, I drove by the house in the last hour, and the picture that we have from a couple months ago versus what it is now, that's from a couple months ago, and go to the, I mean, obviously he has done some things. With the work that he's done, does that qualify to take, in your opinion, take it off the demolition list? Is this something we should even be considering? Has he completed enough that this is no longer an unsafe structure? Maybe somewhat unsightly that he's gonna take care of, but is it an unsafe structure?
I think we need to remember that it's not just unsafe, there are structures that also have a blighting influence on a neighborhood. And so there are still a number of issues that need to be remedied to remove that designation.
That could be done, but right now, for the purposes of this hearing, this is for authorizing demolition of properties that are unsafe or dangerous. So there's a separate nuisance procedure, code violations, things like that could be also followed. But right now, we're talking about unsafe or dangerous structures that you would authorize that repairs are not commenced and diligently processed could be demolished.
So my question is, that house, if this was day one, and we looked at that house, would that even be on the list where it is now? Maybe you can't answer that, but I'm thinking Mr. Pool has made a pretty good effort, and there's some other things that he's gonna take care of, but is it even one that we should be deliberating about now?
This would most likely be, not be one that we would put on a demolition list, looking at it as it is today.
But it was on the, didn't we see this a couple months ago?
Yeah, but look at the work he's done since then.
Yeah. But like I said, he just got the water turned on this month, September, so, and he's been living there since July and trying to get some stuff done, so.
Well, as one commissioner, I propose that we take it off the demolition list.
I'm with you.
And so how do we have, and I'm sure Mr. Pool is gonna do these repairs, how do we follow up to make sure that they're done? If you're gonna take it off of this demolition list, then there are other processes that could be enforced, that could be anything from just municipal code enforcement, to there are separate processes for abating general nuisances of the city that come short of giving you the statutory authority to actually demolish and raise a structure. And so there are proceedings like that that could be taken as well.
One thing that we've discussed before is when a property is on a demolition list with an extension, we don't cite them for property maintenance or code violations. So once that's removed, then there are other issues on here that, you know, we can watch and make sure progress is being made. If we see progress stop, we can go ahead and go at it from a property maintenance code enforcement.
As an example, if, you know, there's a property that started off with, you know, completely unsafe elements of it, and then on the list of problems was peeling paint, for example. If everything was fixed except for the paint, it'd be my opinion you would not have that on your demo list anymore, just because the paint wasn't, but that would be enforced through other mechanisms. But this process here is talking about unsafe or dangerous structures.
Mr. Pool, if this comes off the demo list, if you understood, you could potentially be cited for code violations. I'm not saying that you would be, but, you know, if the grass gets long, or the paint peels, or whatever it might be, that you don't get accomplished, you could be cited for code violations.
Yes, sir.
Do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
In my opinion, Mr. Pool's made a pretty good effort enough to get it off the demo list, that I don't think we should be considering this house anymore. And I congratulate him for what he's done. I know he's got a little bit of work to do, and if he's living in it and he's done some of the work, why do we take up his time for him to come back here in 60 days? But with the full realization that you may run into some code issues if you don't continue the work.
Oh, you don't have to worry about that.
I don't worry about it, I don't want you to worry about it.
So do we have a consensus to remove it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Board.
I'll just remind all property owners to make sure you check with our building inspection division to see if any permits are needed for any work that you're doing.
As an example, you know, we have spoken about this before, that the City of Leavenworth does require that roofing be done by licensed contractors. Are you aware of that, Mr. Pool?
Uh, no.
Now you are. Do you have a building permit, or do you have permits?
Yeah, I can get a contractor to do that. I mean, it's not a, it's not a problem.
Okay, but you realize you have to get a permit, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, you know, I'm comfortable taking it off the demolition list, but I would like to know, and I'm pretty confident, but just this point about having to get the, you know, the license and everything to get the roof repaired, I'd like to know in 60 days that, you know, repairs are done, and this property is back up to the standards that it should be. So that's all-
When we come back, if we, you know, give some property's extensions, we can make sure to give you updates on any that are taken off.
That's fine.
Whether they've continued to work, or completed work, or stopped, and we've had to cite them for code violations, we can give you an update on any of them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pool.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good evening.
Yes, too.
Okay, the next property is 620 O Sage. This is a single-family house and an accessory structure. Looks like this one does list as having active water service. There are active building permits for repairs issued after there was fire damage to this structure. The permit was issued on October 7th of last year. The owner did speak with staff on June 18th of this year, and stated that he was going to repair the property, and I do not believe we've had any contact since that time.
I drove by this thing 45 minutes, no, been an hour ago, and it's, that's a glamour shot compared to what it really looks like.
I agree with you.
And I don't think we give 60 days, I think we go all of these on 30 days. This thing is, when was the fire, when was it fire damaged?
I don't have the fire date, but the permit for repairs after the fire was issued in October of last year.
So 11 months ago. And nothing's been done. There's a tarp, and somebody wrote in spray paint, 620.
I did see that, because I drove by it today.
Spray painted, you know, the address, but nothing's been done. So I think that we reconsider it in 30 days.
What do we need to reconsider it for? Why can't we just proceed with it?
Because we have to, we have to-
Are you the owner?
Are you the owner?
Yes, I am.
Oh, please come up here, yeah. Come on up. State your name and address.
I'm Robert Quentin Ringeloff. I live at 620 on Sage. I've had problems getting this done. I gave a contractor some money, and he has run off on me. I started trying to work on it myself, then I had it broken- I started trying to work on it myself, then I had a broken arm. And I've got a spider bite where they had to work on me, on my back. I'm still bandages. I've still got a hole in my back about that big. It's been hard to do anything. When it gets hot, I can't really work because of the sweat and stuff. Irritates the back, stops it healing. So that's, that's what I'm up against, but we've been working on it inside. They, they took off, like I said, the contractor took off my money.
Sir, do you have a, a license with a licensed roof repair firm to get their roof replaced? That's one of the problems.
All the carpenters. Like I said, my carpenter ran off with my money and I'm trying to track him down.
So what do, what are your plans with the house?
To fix it. I have everything. I have fifty-four thousand dollars in that right now and I can't walk away from it.
Do you plan like renting it out or living there?
I live there right now. I plan on living there to the day I die.
You live there now?
Yes.
Is there running water?
Yes.
As of what day?
It's never been not running.
Oh, active water service, okay.
Now, since I've had the problems, contractor running off, I've had to go.
That's fine. There's, there's, there's major problems. Roof, siding, soffits and eaves.
It's not as bad as it really looks if you get out and let.
What are you doing there, Ryan's?
Yeah.
I, we have tarps up and I've got it, drains on out. My, my hundred and thirty-year-old piano is fine. It's not wet.
So what are you requesting from the commission? Are you looking for an extension?
Yeah, I need, I need some time to be able to get another contractor. I've got money coming on the way. I had to, I had to go procure a loan because they took, like I said, the contractors I had took off with my money. I paid you my check and I ain't heard from you since January first.
I wanna make sure the commission understands that tonight before you is not the granting extensions of things. What you are doing tonight is making the determination that a building is unsafe and dangerous. That you are going to provide an amount of time for which it must, the repairs must be commenced and diligently prosecuted. And if they are not, by your action tonight and within the time period you grant, you are by this action authorizing the city already to go ahead and commence demolition repairs. Now, what happens a lot, several times is that between the time period that you do that resolution, we get notice of a property owner that would like to come and ask you for an extension of some kind. I do wanna make sure you understand that your action tonight is making the determination that it's unsafe and dangerous, establishing as to each property, the reasonable amount of time within which repairs must be commenced and prosecuted completion and that failure to do so does authorize the city to go ahead and commence demolition activities on those properties.
Cause we, well, that's, that's a little bit different than, I mean, I, one of the options that we thought we had was to give an extension, but you're saying for this meeting, that's not?
You're, I mean, if, if you wanna qualify it as an extension, you can go ahead and set the time as a longer period of time.
Than the ten days?
Exactly.
Okay, till like November ninth.
So do the sixty days thing or?
Is the, is the commence the work? If we give sixty, sixty days, that's the commence the work?
Time period, they must commence that work and show progress during that work. It does not necessarily, necessarily require all completion, but they have to at least be diligently prosecuting it going on and on.
Mr. Randolph, can you get any, anything accomplished in sixty days?
Oh, yeah. We started cleaning it up here too. It's been out back. A lot of the stuff is in the way. Getting rid of, I've got windows and doors that I bought for the place that's just gotta be put in.
What did you say about?
I've bought shingles and stuff already. They're sitting there ready to go. My carpenter took off with my money and he ain't gonna let the work.
So what do you think you can have accomplished within sixty days?
Oh, I have it cleaned up and siding on the front of it and soffits back on and stuff. Soon as we get to, get the wrappers back up.
What about the backyard? What, what'd you say about the backyard?
Oh, the backyard? I inherited a big mess when I bought that house. And it's been a slow process going through it and getting rid of stuff. I don't know why the backyard was ever allowed to be as bad as it was when I first bought the place. And then after the fire, we've had to move stuff out of the house, clean stuff up. So I was also dealing with the previous owner's belongings as well. And no sooner we got it, his stuff cleaned up and boxed up, that's when it was lit on fire. And I still have a problem with the police department hasn't bothered to arrest the lady that lit it on fire, even after two videos were given to her, given to the inspectors. They, in fact, she was arrested for a fire at the end of Ottawa, out in front of the park.
Uh, Mr. Poole, on, on your backyard, think of, think of your neighbors. The backyard is. Mr. Randolph, I'm sorry. What did I call?
You call him Mr. Poole.
Oh, Mr. Poole left, I'm sorry. Think of your neighbors. Do what you can to clean up the backyard. There's other people living in the neighborhood, they take a lot of pride in their property and they have to get up every morning, go out their back door and look at this. I mean, that's, think of the neighbors. Think of what it does to the neighborhood. And that's something that you can do. You own this, this fire's been there for eighteen months. The fire damaged and there hasn't been cleanup in the backyard. Get it cleaned up. At least make an effort, make your, so your neighbors aren't just.
I, I understand that. I, I've had to rely on help of friends and stuff when they've got time to help me do it because I can't, like I said, I have a big hole in my back still.
I understand that. I understand that. I understand that you have that, but it's been eighteen months and surely, I mean, taking almost one stick a day for eighteen months, this thing could almost, you know, the backyard could be cleaned up.
Okay, so I just need a consensus. If we wanna consensus, what, November ninth date, I guess to?
I'd just like to ask for clarification of Mr. Waters. So if we give the extension for sixty days, that's sixty days in which the only really criteria is that Mr. Randolph will commence that work.
The statute reads that resolutions shall fix a reasonable time within which the repair removal shall be commenced and a statement that if the owner fails to commence repair or removal within the time stated or fails to diligently prosecute the same to completion, the governing body will cause the structure to be repaired or raised and removed. So I think, I think that implies completion could be as well.
Oh, really? Okay.
Of the elements that make it unsafe.
Okay, well, that's, okay, that's, that's, that's fine. I'm, I'm good with sixty days.
Sixty days?
I guess that's what I'm gonna have to deal with.
A lot of work.
If it went for the stroke and the broken arm and back, I'd have had it done like a month afterwards. That's the kind of work I used to do.
Okay.
Good luck, Mr. Randolph.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph.
Thank you. Sixty days?
Uh-huh, November ninth.
Okay, thank you.
The date is November ninth. It's not sixty days, cause actually that, that, you know, it's fifty-seven days or whatever it might be, so.
November ninth.
Get too much in the legal easier. We'll say the date. We'll extend till November ninth rather than a particular number of days.
That is how, that is how the final resolution will be worked.
Okay, the next property is an accessory structure located at seven thirty-three Pawnee. This is a bank-owned foreclosed property. There's been no change and no contact from owners other than an open records request that was submitted to the city on August thirty-first of this year.
Is anyone here for seven thirty-three Pawnee?
Is this one that we can, rather than go till November ninth, can we go the next regular scheduled meeting, which is two weeks from now? Or is that upset the apple cart too much?
Statutorily, you can establish the dates as to whatever the reasonable times are as to these properties. I think it's more function of what probably works best with, with your staff and, and coordinating some of these activities.
I, I'm just thinking, we've had absolutely no, uh, heard from anyone that owns the property. Nothing whatsoever. Why belabor this point? Let's get it moving. And the next regular scheduled meeting is September twenty-eighth, is it not?
And that goes over to ten days. That's if the statute's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if the default is the ten days, we've worded that, but you can establish, again, the ten days is just kind of the, the default position that the city has put in here on that. There's, there's other provisions that require ten days notices as to other types of nuisances and such. For unsafe and dangerous structures, you establish the time periods. You're not married to the ten days on that. It just has, the statute requires that you provide a reasonable time within which.
I don't think it has to come back.
It does not have, nothing has to, nothing has to come back to you. That was kind of the point of my previous statement. Is that you are authorizing at this, with this action, that if, for example, on the last matter, that if that is not done by, within the sixty days, by this action, you have already authorized staff to go ahead and do the demolition procedures without coming back to you for further direction. It comes back to you for further direction if an applicant or an owner comes and requests to be heard by you and, and you agree, just, you know, as a matter of policy for you. But your actions tonight are authorizing the city's staff to take those actions after the time periods you establish as to these properties.
And it's ten days as a minimum.
That's, that's what we have, that's what we've established here. The statute requires a reasonable time.
So is it a consensus then for this seven thirty-three Pawnee to proceed with demolition within a ten-day period? I guess?
Yes, is that proper? Yes.
Yep, okay.
Okay, the next property is eight sixty-nine Sherman. This is a single-family house and accessory structure. Last water service was in April of two thousand nineteen. There is an active building permit for renovations issued on August second of this year. Uh, there was a fire at this property. It was also previously approved for a special use permit to allow two-family dwelling in a single-family district, which was approved in two thousand nineteen. Property has recently changed ownership and the current owner has indicated their intent to complete the repairs and they have been actively working on this property.
Okay, is anyone here from eight sixty-nine Sherman? I drove by there today and, yeah, it's looking quite a bit better. Did anybody else go by there?
Yeah, I was by there an hour or so ago. They, the scaffolding was up and they, they had some equipment in the side yard. Yeah, yeah, I think they are making, they're making progress on this one.
A lot better than how it originally looked.
But it's not to the point that it, it shouldn't be considered.
So keep it within the sixty days?
Sixty days.
Okay.
You think consensus, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. November ninth, sorry, sorry, yeah, just say, yeah, just, yeah, extension to November ninth, yeah, just say that.
Okay, moving on, the next property is nine ten Sherman. This is a single-family house. Last date of water service was April seventeenth of two thousand twenty. Uh, the owner has indicated to staff that he does not intend to repair the property and there has been no change and no active building permits on this.
Proceed.
Yeah. Consensus to proceed with demolition?
Yes.
Consensus, okay.
Yeah, you still do have to establish the time period.
Ten days.
Ten days.
You still have to do that by statute. You do have to do that.
Okay, ten days. Proceed with demolition consensus.
Okay, the next property is nine eighteen Potawatomi. This is a single-family house with the last date of water service in August twenty-fifth of two thousand fourteen. The owner did indicate his intent to repair the property. There, when we checked this, there were no active building permits on it, but it looks like there has been a little bit of movement. I'm not sure if the owner is here tonight or not.
William too.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is William Wallace, but it's fourteen fifteen Mary Street. Council's rental property. I haven't done anything with it. I had a sister who had cancer for the last four or five years. I was flying out to California trying to help take care of her and I had medical issues. But I had a contractor start on it about a year ago. He did about two, three months worth of work and then he ran off or he demanded the rest of the money and I wouldn't pay him. I've got a relative now who came in, he was a roper, he came out of retirement and he is, him and my relative, we're fixing it up and I'm going to downsize and I'm going to move into it once it's finished.
Mr. Wallace, you think you can get something moving on this in the next two months, by November ninth?
He's already been moving on. He's.
When do you plan on moving in, William?
Uh, probably in six months.
I've known Mr. Wallace for fifty-plus years. If he says he's gonna do it, I think he's gonna do it.
You, you looked him up here to me. So is the water service, is it?
No, nothing's been turned on yet. We use electricity from the neighbors to do the work till we can get everything up to some kind of code to.
Okay.
Do you have a building permit, William?
No, he said we didn't need one if a relative was doing it. Do we still need one?
Uh, he would need to talk to our building inspection divisions. There, there are some items that do require building permit regardless. Some that don't if you're working on your own property. So it sounds like he's been in contact with our building inspection division, so I would just, yeah, encourage to keep in contact with them to make sure that any required permits are being obtained.
You know Hal Burkett, don't you? You know Hal, Hal Burkett?
Yes.
Yeah, that coordinate with him.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wallace. We have a consensus of sixty.
Yeah, November ninth?
Yep, extension November ninth.
We're gonna look at it again, November ninth, William.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, the next property is nine nineteen Potawatomi. Uh, this is another single-family house and an accessory structure that was damaged by fire. Last date of water service was October fifteenth of last year and there has been no change on this property.
Good evening, Mayor Proton and Commissioners. My name is Richard Behealer. I'm counsel for MidFirst Bank. MidFirst Bank was the actual lender on the property. Uh, it was the first foreclosure filed in Leavenworth County this year. Uh, it, it was successful in its foreclosure action. Uh, the certificate of purchase was issued. The redemption period just ran September third. We don't even have the sheriff's deed yet. It's been prepared and sent to the sheriff's, uh, sent to the sheriff for, for execution. But the bank MidFirst intends to rebuild and repair the property. It's budgeted in excess of one hundred thousand dollars for that purpose, but obviously it needs to be in title and it is soliciting bids from contractors at this time. It anticipates beginning work next month uh, in, in the bid process. Obviously, it has to go through the permitting. There's substantial damage to the property and, and then there will be delays, but work is intended to be commenced next month.
Sir, did you say that you're having problems, the deed hasn't transferred yet?
The, the certificate of purchase is being surrendered to the sheriff for execution of the sheriff's deed, which would be the, the final deed, which would put.
The county registrar deeds happens to be in the audience. You two ought to talk right after this.
No, no delay on, on the part of the sheriff. It normally takes two to three weeks and it was just issued here probably in the last week.
So you figure?
It was forwarded to the sheriff.
You figure by November ninth, there'll be some work on this?
Oh, I, I suspect it'll be well underway and in fact, uh, I, I suspect it'll be far enough along that I would request that the commissioners consider if we submitted a, a progress letter and asked if the matter be removed if, if it otherwise meets the requirements of the commissioners. Uh, because I do think the, the scope of work anticipated a hundred and twenty days to completion. So it won't be finished by that point, but obviously it'll, it'll have substantial work done.
And is it the bank that owns the property now? Mid, MidFirst?
Bank, MidFirst. Mid, MidFirst Bank, I'm sorry, MidFirst.
So the bank's the one that's making all the repairs?
The bank is the one that's making the repairs.
Okay.
Where, where is this, is this bank in the county or is it, it, I just, I've never heard of that bank. Is it?
Well, quite honestly, Commissioner, I, I, I don't know much about the bank myself. It, uh, where, where it's located, but it seemed very familiar with the property.
That's it, November ninth.
Thank you.
November ninth.
I'm good with that.
Consensus, yeah, November ninth.
How we doing, Mr. Waters?
We got this one figured out now?
If I'm not saying anything.
We're getting it.
Just checking in.
Okay. Okay, the next property is nine twenty-seven Potawatomi. This was just an accessory structure. And this one was actually taken down by the property owner yesterday, so this one can be removed.
I drove through the alley and I was trying to figure out where it was.
It's gone. Okay.
Okay, the next property is seven oh six Gar. Okay, the next property is seven oh-six Garfield. This is a single-family house. The last date of water service was, uh, December of two thousand fourteen. The owner did sign the remediation agreement and indicated her repent, excuse me, her intent to repair. Um, she is out of town and wasn't able to be here tonight. Uh, her written statement is in your packet. Um, and, uh, she did provide staff. She has solicited bids and provided that to staff, so we do have those in our file. We didn't put that in the packet. Um, but, uh, we would recommend giving this property owner, uh, until November ninth to work on it since she has been working with staff.
Great.
I agree. Yeah, I drive, I mean, I drove by there and, I mean, it, I thought it looked, I mean, of course, not as bad as some of the other ones, so I don't know if there's a lot of other look inside that needs to be done as well. So do we have a consensus or November ninth?
Yes.
November ninth, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Have you drove by there? No.
Okay, the next property is seven sixty-seven Charles. This is another single-family house, an accessory structure. The date of last water service was February of two thousand eighteen. Um, we did, I did speak to the owner and he has indicated that he is working on securing a demolition contract to have it taken down himself. And it's just been, uh, unable to get, yeah, unable to get someone, um, lined up, but is actively working on that.
Yeah, I, I got that when I got the email. I opened it, September tenth, that's today. So I didn't, I need to correct that with the county. I guess they got the wrong address where I live, so.
Yeah, somehow the county had his, uh, his place of residence incorrect, so he, he did finally get ahold of us and so we all talked through it.
Neighbors let me know. My brother lives right next door, so, uh, it, it's not a problem. I contacted.
Name and address.
Okay, Clayton Bowlin, three twenty Birch Lane, Lawrence, Kansas.
Okay.
And, uh, I got ahold of one guy. He's, can't get to it till about the end of October and then this other guy's gonna come by tomorrow or the next day and take a look at it, so we'll start soon as we can.
For demolition?
Yeah, I'm taking it down. The garage, he said was okay. Uh, this house, I've had several people looking at it to buy it and then nobody's pulled the trigger and then I've had people that come in to repair and the repairs are just too much, so I think demolition is the best way.
Right.
What we, just out of curiosity, what will you do with the property, Mr. Bowlin, after?
I'm gonna rebuild.
What's, uh, what's, if someone does lose their house, or if a house is demoed, what is the minimum frontage on a new house?
Um, it depends on the zoning district, but for established lots, um, even if they're non-conforming to our current lot wood standards, you can rebuild on those properties. You just have to meet current setback standards.
Okay, so, so even if it has a thirty-six inch, uh, thirty-six foot frontage?
He, he can still rebuild as long as he can meet, uh, current setback standards.
Yeah, and I'm working on all that stuff too. I gotta get electrical, uh, I got a lot of stuff I still gotta cover.
So should we go November ninth on this too, just in, because it should be taken care of by then?
Right, sounds like.
I hope so, unless there's a delay, but I'll, you'll see me back asking for a little more time, but I.
Do we have a consensus?
Oh, yes.
November ninth?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowlin.
Okay, the next property is nineteen twenty-one Fifth Avenue. This is a single-family house. The date of last water service was March of two thousand eleven. Um, there's been no change. This property was previously considered for demolition in two thousand seventeen and was taken off. Um, and there really hasn't been any change since that time. I do believe the owner has passed away at some point since the, it was last on the property or on the demolition list. Um, county records still have it in that gentleman's name. Um, so I'm, there, there may be some, you know, uh, probate type issues, um, but we haven't had any contact from anybody associated with it.
I say we move forward immediately and.
I agree.
That's why we have an attorney for to figure out the legal things if someone has passed. That's, that's your job, not mine, ours.
Or is that person's?
Yeah. Do I have a consensus to proceed?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
Do I?
Oh, please go.
My name is Tracy Brown. I own twenty-three oh-three Fourth Avenue, but we own the property behind that also.
Okay.
Would it be up for sale and we could repair it?
You would need to talk to whoever's listed as the property owner. Um, we, the city doesn't take ownership of these lots.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, we could help you with, you know, the publicly listed property owner information, um, but it would, then be on you to talk to that property owner to, get ahold of it.
Yeah, I mean, there could be an estate open. You might have to, an estate might have to be opened in court or there could be a will, but we just, we don't have that information.
Yeah.
I guess he's been there for a couple of years. I had talked to his brother.
Come up, please.
Oh, come up, please. Uh, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Maurice Brim.
Twenty-three oh-three Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
And we own the property behind that too and don't ask me what that address is.
It has a new roof on it. Um, the softest is a bad thing. The new roof inside's not really been leaked in. Um, his brother's an airplane pilot. I've seen him once in the last year and a half. I'm not sure where he's at. I've been trying to contact him and the number I have is not good, so, um, we may have to see at the courthouse about an estate or something.
It's not a bad property. Uh, like I said, it's right across the street from my mom's house, so.
Well, I thought so.
Access to the property back there too, and we've got that easement there on the other side of the two houses that are just to the right of that.
And you're right behind there.
Yeah, we're right behind there. Our property is actually over to the side of that too, where those trees are beyond that property up there too.
Do you want the house or do you want the dirt the house is on?
Well, we'd take either one, but he, but we would prefer the house and make it into a rental. We're both veterans and we both work for the VA and we could fix it up and put a couple veterans in there.
Yeah, and that's somewhat, and I admire what you're thinking of, but my position is I think we should move forward, which is at ten days, but realistically, when we say ten days, bulldozers are not gonna run in ten days.
But if we could purchase the property.
It could be four or five months. In the meantime, I would say with all, uh, as quickly as possible, you try to figure out who own, who owns it, what you can do, but I don't wanna put this thing on hold. Now, the thing that you should realize, it hasn't even had utilities for over ten years. If you haven't been in, inside of that thing, it's probably filled with varmints and everything else it has.
He went inside of it and he took me in there.
Okay, but I, I think that we should move forward, but keep, even though we say ten days, those bulldozers will not be there in ten days. That's, uh, months down the road, just the process, but.
Well, I'm the type of person, I would like to know in, within ten days and then talk to, come and talk to the city and say, hey, we're, you know, we can purchase this and then, you know, like next month, when you have your next meeting, we can come and say, you know, we've purchased it, now we can fix it up.
If it becomes your property, yeah, you can argue for it. Right now, you, yeah, I, I just hope that you can.
Well, we just wanted to know what our option was.
For the ten days, what are we, 'cause they have to, if that's something they wanna do, I mean.
I mean, you, you have, you are authorizing that if it's not, you know, commencing such, that you're authorizing the city, go ahead and do it. Doesn't mean the city staff necessarily has to. You could also now just give you your options. You could take this property off and have it come back for future determination if more information is determined. I mean.
We did it November ninth. That should give someone plenty of time if they're deceased to go through an estate.
Yep. I would agree with November ninth.
Yeah.
So you could do some research or try to figure out.
You're gonna probably have to hire a lawyer to figure out.
I would say, remember, you know, the city commission tonight isn't in the business of, is of brokering real estate deals.
Right, right.
Right, right.
And just out of curiosity, why would this be considered a dangerous structure?
Well, they listed all the things here. Structural defects, uh.
Well, we took it off the list.
One time we did.
And it was in the same condition.
But the, since then, I think it, it fell back into disrepair.
Yeah, well, okay, it was on before and then we took it and we took it off because evidently.
He had made some progress, um, and the commissioner at that time felt that he had made enough progress that they felt it, progress would continue. It didn't, um, and so this is where we're at.
That's, that's what happens with too many properties in our city, quite frankly. I mean, so that's why we need to, si, if it's sixty days, fine, but.
That's cool, yeah, I just cares.
It happens with too many. If they fall into the, kind of the ether land and it, and they come back, what, four years later, right? I mean, it's twenty twenty-one, so.
Okay. So, November ninth, November ninth.
Madam Mayor, is that what you said?
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, the next property is two oh-four North Seventeenth Street. This is a single-family house. Uh, date of last water service was June of two thousand fifteen. There was a building permit issued for renovations on September second of this year. The owner has signed a remediation agreement and has indicated their intent to repair and there has, um, been progress working on the property and the owner.
I'm Jerry Nelson, a member of A six LLC, the owner. The address of A six is twenty-six oh-four South Fourth. The July ninth, twenty twenty-one letter was sent to eight six oh-four South Fourth. That was apparently corrected, sent again, and I got it, oh, a day or two before I signed the mediation agreement. And once I went to the property to, uh, start looking into it, see what it was gonna take. Well, I'd like to clarify a couple of the things. One of them is we got a permit for the siding in the windows back in two thousand twenty. The, uh, front windows were replaced and the chipboard, OSB you see beside that one window was where they took off old siding and the, uh, boxing. Uh, I know, I noted in one of the comments that was written that the windows were boarded up. They are not boarded up. That's just OSB where they put in around that window. Then the, um, guys that were doing the siding put that rock veneer on the front in the spring of two thousand twenty and they were tenants of ours and then they said, well, you can't evict us if we don't pay and they quit. And I got a judgment against them for about five thousand dollars in January of two thousand twenty-one. We've been trying to get somebody to come back in to go to work on it. When I went over there in August of this year to start taking siding off of it, to, uh, get it ready, to see what the boxing was underneath it and see what it was gonna take, there was rot and studs underneath a couple of the windows. Uh, I could've just slapped something in there and covered it up. That's not how I like to do stuff, so I went down, got a building permit. I've been talking to a contractor by the name of John Burton, who's got a crew to come in. He was hoping to start the first week of September. He has not gotten started yet. I think his other job hung him up a little longer than he anticipated. But, uh, that north wall where the, you can see on the picture, there were sightings off of it. There's, uh, one window that needs replaced on that north wall. The other windows have all been replaced. Underneath that one window that needs replaced and one of the other windows that was replaced, uh, that lapped siding, of course, that stuff wasn't much good when it was new and it was probably put on around two thousand or maybe a little before that. And it leaked around the windows and so the, the studs and the supports and stuff underneath the windows have suffered probably thirty years of rot, twenty years at least. And, uh, they're to the point that I won't put it back together like that, but we do have the permit. We are intending to start on it. We've taken, uh, the permit that we got the other day says interior repairs because I'm gonna have to take. We have taken the sheet rock off of a couple of areas underneath those windows and, you know, several feet out away from them to make sure that we get it all repaired. So the, that's the interior repairs that it's referring to in the, uh, building permit, but most of it's going to be a structural. The how, the studs and the seal plates in the area of the windows is, is the main thing. And we do intend, we intended to have it started before this, but, uh, Mr. Burton hasn't been able to get there yet. I have done those myself. I don't have the energy to, to work a job and then go to work after that anymore, so I'm not doing it myself. But that is the intention.
Mr. Nelson, what did, uh, Mr. Burton, uh, does he give you any kind of timeframe that he's gonna help you with?
Yeah, first week of September.
Right, evidently that didn't happen, so what?
Well, he thought the structural part of it, depending upon, you know, whether it's, you know, ten feet around the windows or, or whether it's, you know, thirty feet between the win, and, and both windows, he, he's thinking two to four days to do it and then we'll be, you will have it boxed in on the outside, ready for siding and then we move forward with the siding. But I don't wanna put siding on till the wall's completely repaired. But the, but the structural repairs itself does not make the house unsafe because that's an exterior wall and the, the, uh, ceiling joists and the floor joists run parallel to it, not perpendicular, so it, it, it's holding itself up in the gable. It's not holding the roof up.
So November ninth?
November ninth?
November ninth, we, we should, we should have the structural repairs done and be well down the road on the siding.
Okay.
One quick question, Mr. Nelson. When did, you said you had some, uh, tenants in there and?
Not in there. We, we, I got some other rental houses.
Okay, the, I don't wanna hear anymore. I, I kind of understand. That's fine, that's fine. Thank you for your time. We'll see you November ninth.
Consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, our final property is ten fifty Tenth Avenue. Uh, this is a multifamily structure. The date of last water service was January of two thousand fourteen and there has been no change to this one.
Is anyone here for ten fifty Tenth Avenue? No. And last water service was January twenty-second, right, two thousand fourteen?
Yes, and there are no building permits on this.
Okay. Any thoughts? Consensus to?
Proceed.
Proceed?
Yep.
Proceed?
Yes, so just to record that would be a ten day.
Ten days, yes. Proceed with demolition. Okay.
Okay, that's the final structure. Um, I believe Mayor Protem Leonhart has, um, wording for a motion from the city clerk.
Yeah, I've got, got a suggested motion, so you don't have to read through all of them. I made notes of all of your consensus along the way. Okay.
Just, uh, just to confirm, make sure we're together, uh, we're, we're gonna remove six nineteen Ottawa, right? Taiwan, Mr. Fools, is that what you?
Oh, I'll, I'll go through just to sort of, so, uh, six nineteen Ottawa, uh, removed completely. Six twenty Osage, an extension to November ninth. Seven thirty-three Pawnee, proceed after the ten days. Eight sixty-nine Sherman, uh, extension to November ninth. Nine ten Sherman, proceed after the ten days. Nine eighteen Potawatomi, extension to November ninth. Nine nineteen Potaway, Potawatomi, extension to November ninth. Uh, nine twenty-seven, remove, as that's already been taken down by the property owner. Seven oh-six Garfield, extension to November ninth. Seven sixty-seven Charles, extension to November ninth. Nineteen twenty-one Fifth Avenue, extension to November ninth. Two oh-four North Seventeenth, extension to November ninth. And ten fifty Tenth Avenue, proceed after the ten days.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so then I just need to, um, I move to adopt resolution B dash twenty-two ninety-two proceeding with demolition or giving an ex, extension as agreed to by consensus of the commission after review of each property and as annotated by the city clerk.
Second.
Uh, Madam Mayor, did we close the public hearing?
Oh, no. Okay, sorry, uh, I need.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Oh, uh.
Aye.
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 Okay, it's closed. Thank you, Commissioner Pricey. Okay, so I will read this again. I move to adopt resolution B dash twenty-two ninety-two proceeding with demolition or giving extension as agreed to by consensus of the commission after review of each property and as annotated by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and, Commissioner Pricey?
Aye.
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 Uh.
Four zero. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Okay, next up, bids, contracts and agreements. Uh, consider bids for Riverfront Park water line replacement.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight I bring before you the water, or the Riverfront Park Waterline Replacement Project. Over the past over years, we've had multiple water lines break there at the Riverfront Park Campground that have been very costly to repair with high water bills. The line is extremely thin-walled and brittle, making the line to break very easily. Staff believes this line was installed when the park was built, and from my knowledge is well over 30 years ago. So it's, it's a fairly old park. If these breaks keep happening, we're going to need to adjust our yearly water budgets to pay water bills and for the breaks. And it could break bad note that we can't supply water to our campers in the campground, can't supply the restroom facility as well. So, so that's, that's part of the issue too. As a result, staff has formulated set of guidelines, which we received proposals for replacement of the water line. Interested firms were given guidelines of horizontal drilling, the majority of the project, a mandatory pre-bid meeting that was August 31st of 2021, a start date of November 1st or after, and must be completed by December 30th, 2021. The waterline project was published for two weeks by our city-approved publishing firms. On September 28th of 2021, the submitted proposals were opened. One firm submitted a proposal. The results were followed. J.F. Denny, at amount of $49,801. Staff recommends the bid from J.F. Denny in the amount of $49,801 for the Riverfront Park Waterline Replacement Project number 201, or 2, excuse me, project number 2021 RF Water. There is a lot of budget amount of $57,000, $57,500 allocated in the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARP, for this project. Do you have any questions?
Okay. I didn't have any questions on this. Commissioner Pricey?
I have none.
No, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Wilson, okay. Okay, then it looks like I just need a motion.
I move that we accept the bid from J.F. Denny in, in the amount not to exceed $49,801.
Second.
Okay, go over in the bin. Commissioner Pricey?
Aye.
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 Okay, four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Okay, next up, consider award of the 2021-2022 salt bid. Mr. Faust.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem and Commissioners. As you mentioned, this evening, the issue is to whether to award the 21-22 salt bid. This is a procurement of around 1,500 tons of crushed deicing rock salt. Leavenworth County did advertise for the salt bids for their needs, and the bid specs do allow the city to piggyback on top of their bid. Currently, our salt dome is full, so we don't anticipate ordering any salt for several months. Maybe this is my first winter. I hope we don't have to order any salt, which means we've had a nice winter. Leavenworth County bid opening was held on August 23rd with a low bid from Independent Salt Company at $54.26 a ton. We did call several firms just to kind of verify that price, and the prices we got were significantly higher than that. So staff does recommend the city commission approve Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $54.26 a ton for a total of $81,390 if we do in fact purchase 1,500 tons through the year.
Okay, I didn't have any questions on that. Commissioner Wilson, do you have any questions? That's true.
Is this a contingency? In other words, you said, you said the dome is filled right now?
Correct.
So if we approve this, it's going to be triggered by what?
By, by different winter events. I mean, if we have a bad winter and we expend a lot of salt, we'll have to replenish our supply, so this gives us that ability to do that.
You would be authorizing staff to make these expenditures without coming back to you for further purchases as, as they are needed?
Okay.
Mr. Faust, is this, we're going to buy 1,500 tons or nothing? Or can we buy?
No, we, we can buy, if, if we have a couple of bad events and we, we feel we need to have, you know, 500 tons to replenish our supply, that's what we do.
Okay. How long does it take? You know, I want you to place the order until they deliver.
Actually, it's, it's really quick. Again, it depends on how bad the winter is, if everybody's having the same issue getting trucks to deliver, when everybody's needing the salt can take a while. We watch it pretty close. So if we get to a point where we feel we need salt, we'll definitely order it.
I realize that you have not been here through a winter, but let's say we have a six-inch snowfall, which would trigger salt, et cetera. How many tons would go, goes on the street with a six-inch snowfall?
Actually, I don't have an answer for you on that, on, on the rate that we apply the, the salt. We try to use it sparingly, hit intersection, hit hills. A lot of times, we actually don't need to put the salt down. It just depends on the event. You know, when it gets really cold like it did this past year, salt becomes, doesn't, it loses.
Doesn't work.
In fact, it works after about 19 degrees, so. But, you know, 1,500 tons is substantial.
Is it? Okay, okay. Thank you.
But if, if you do need to purchase some amount of salt, it's not necessarily 1,500. Will you just purchase what's needed for the, for the city?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine, all right. I understand.
Okay, so I just need a motion.
Well, I move to approve the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $54.26 a ton for 1,500 tons, totaling $81,390 with Independent Salt Company.
Second.
Okay, go over in the bin. Commissioner Pricey?
Aye.
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 Okay, four to zero. Okay, consider bids for Lakeview Drive Street Improvement Project. Is that you?
The issue this evening is to consider the bids received and possible contract award for the Lakeview Drive Street Improvement Project adjacent to the new Culvers Restaurant. The new Culvers Restaurant will be located at the northwest corner of Eisenhower and Lakeview Drive. The existing Lakeview Drive is currently a narrow, open-ditch roadway that will be used as the primary entrance for the drive-through traffic to the Culvers Restaurant. As part of an agreement with the developer of the Culvers property, the city did agree to design and construct and improve road section to extend just past the entrance to Culvers, the project will pay for through funds set aside for economic development. The design includes widening of Lakeview Drive and the addition of a dedicated turn lane. The improvements do extend just past the Culvers entrance, roughly about 180 feet in length. Bids were opened on September 8th, 2021, and Line and Weaver construction was the low bidder. To help ensure the project is completed on or before the opening dates for the new Culvers, the contract specifies that the start date shall be no later than October 4th of this year, with substantial completion no later than November 5th. And so during that timeframe, it would shut down Lakeview Drive to allow that construction to, to go forward. The city commission does generally award a contract to the low bid if that bid is less than the engineer's estimate, and whose evaluation by the city indicates that the award would be in the best entrance of the city. Engineer's estimate was 184,000. The bid from Line and Weaver was 150,363. Staff does recommend that the city commission awards Lakeview Drive improvements to Line and Weaver Construction for the base bid amount of 150,383, $63.
Okay, so between, so you said October 4th through November 5th, so that's a window when the Culvers is?
They had initially said they'd like to be open by the end of October. There were some delays in getting materials.
Okay.
With the current situation in the economy. They do plan to go vertical shortly. I think they still want to be done by the end of the year, but we lose our paving window in November with the cold temperatures. And so I'd hate for them to be done and ready to open around New Year's. I don't have the road done, so.
Correct, correct, okay. Commissioners, did you have any questions?
Mr. Faust, looking at the map here, you don't have it up, put on our, in our packet, the rectangular red, the red rectangle area, that's the extent of it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Faust, the, the bid by Line and Weaver is over $30,000 less than the base bid for the engineer's estimate. How does Line and Weaver, how, what are they going to do to, I guess, establish those or achieve those efficiencies, you know, in terms of being $30,000 plus less than the engineer's estimate?
They're actually one of the contractors working on the Culvers site.
Okay.
And so they're already there. So from a mobilization perspective, they really wanted this.
They're, they're already there, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we award the Lakeview Drive Improvements Project to Line and Weaver Construction for the base bid amount of 150,363.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's go over, Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
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 Okay, four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Faust. Okay, first consideration ordinance. Chief kitchens. So to adopt Uniform Public Offense Code 37th Edition.
Madam Mayor, Protem and Commissioners, the police department is before their governing body this evening, asking for you to place an ordinance on first consideration that would adopt the 37th edition of the Uniform Public Offense Codes for Kansas Cities. Every year, for many years, the City of Leavenworth has used these as our model and have adopted them for use by the police department to enforce generally laws within our community. And it is not effective until the governing body adopts it. So we've been using the previous edition from last year. I have highlighted in the policy report the changes that went from last year to this year, or from the previous edition to this edition. There are no earth-shattering changes. Most of the things are fairly minor relative to legal decisions or reviews or updates. There are two new ordinances that were added from the last time to this time that I will point out to you. There is a new section, 7.5, Distribution of Unattributed Applications for Advanced Voting Ballots. This has to do with advertising, or if you're going to tell a person that you can get an advanced ballot in, as part of the election process, you have to be very clear about who you are and those kinds of things. Feel free to read that in, during the course of the next couple of weeks, and if you have questions, I'll answer those. But that's really about just making sure that if you're going to be engaged in that behavior, it's clear who you are and, and what organization you represent. That's essentially what that is. There's also a new section, 9.3, Violation of Executive Order Under a State Statute Mandating a Curfew or Prohibiting a Public Entry. This is relative to if, for example, the governor issues an executive order, let's say there's a tornado or a flood or something like that, and she or he declares a disaster area and says there's a curfew or we're coordinating this area off for everyone's safety. If a person violates those provisions, then this creates a local ordinance in which the police department could enforce that and, and, and issue a citation or make an arrest if someone was causing trouble in that particular area. And so those are the only two new sections that were added from the previous edition. The rest, again, typically there's some definition changes, there's some upgrades to the language, but nothing that was earth-shattering that would cause me any concern, and I would recommend at this point, moving forward, and ask for your consensus to place this on first consideration.
I have a question on the section 3.2.1, sexual battery.
Yes, sir.
I mean, what is there, what's the nature of that?
So if you, if you might recall, last year, the, the, the purpose of putting that in was that in order for a person to be required to register as a sex offender, if you violate that particular provision, then it must be a court of record, okay? Those were legal decisions by courts. And so it was in that vein that we elected to, to opt out of that because we didn't want city court to be the applicable court, because that's not a court of record. Municipal court is not a court of record.
Right.
Okay, so again, in this particular instance, as I understand it though, that matter has been appealed to the Supreme Court, and it's currently, currently under legal review. So there wouldn't be any change from last time to this time. It's still included in there, but we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be adopting that particular portion. We would want to wait till the decision of the Supreme Court. If you, I mean, again, that was last year, but if you remember, that was the whole idea is that if someone were guilty of that provision.
Right.
And we wanted them, and we do want them to be required to register as a sex offender.
Right.
That has to be a court of record, and municipal court is not a court of record. That's be done in district court. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. And there's an editor's note in the, in the, the book that says it's currently under review by the Supreme Court.
That's the state Supreme Court, Kansas Supreme Court. I'm glad that the chief explained that, because last year, we went through that and we took it out as a city, a municipal court thing and threw it up to district court, so people could be charged with that crime and also, if they're convicted, be put on sexual offenders list. Because if we did it in city court, they would not be on the sexual offender, on the list. Of course, people spun it around, saying that we, we allowed sexual offenses, which was, you know, obviously a, a misstatement of fact.
Okay, I just need a consensus then. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. Four to zero, okay. Next, first consideration ordinance to adopt standard traffic ordinance, 48th edition.
Madam Protem and Commissioners, along the same vein, the, there is a 48th edition of the standard traffic ordinances for Kansas cities that I'm asking you to place an ordinance on first consideration to adopt. Again, as well in the policy report, I've highlighted the changes. There are typically a few more changes in the traffic manual, because there's always some language change or penalty change, nothing in there that would cause me of any concern. There's a couple of things I want to point out to you that might be of interest, one of which is there's some change in the languages associated with funeral processions. Essentially, what the legislature did, and then the adoption of this book would do, was it puts the patriot guard, essentially the patriot guard, and a little bit more of a formal recognition during funerals. And that has been changed, that's as a result of the state law that was passed and then included in this manual. Now, it doesn't give them additional powers to block traffic or any of those things, but it does provide some slightly more formal recognition of them. I think a lot of the veterans groups, they participate in a lot of the funerals, and so they want it to be a little bit more formal in their, in their participation, and so that's what that is. I wanted to point that out, which we would, I would fully support that endeavor as well. And in addition, I think you have talked a lot about some changes to the alcohol laws relative to that. There's also one in here that would be relative to us, and that is during the course of COVID, there was this business of being able to go to a drinking establishment, buy an alcohol beverage there and leave with it and take it home. They've included that in here. There are some very strict provisions about how you do that. It has to be sealed and in its original container and that sort of thing. And so the point is, there would be an exception to the open container laws that currently, you can't drive down the street and drink a beer or a martini or anything like that, but there are, there is that provision that allows a person to go to a drinking establishment and leave with it and take it home, as long as it's done properly, that would be a defense to the open container. So that's a little bit different than we've ever done, but that is in line with, I think, the, the couple of other alcohol issues and, and legal changes that have been made as a result of COVID and all of that. So I did want to point that out, that's a little bit different. But again, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, that we, we would be able to make the proper interpretation of whether there was a violation there. Again, no other substantive changes that would cause me any concern, and I would recommend passage.
I didn't have any questions, anybody? Okay, just need a consensus.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, next is first consideration ordinance to adopt traffic control devices, Master List 2021.
Yes, ma'am, as a, a matter of policy, we, we come to the city commission and ask you every year to reauthorize the intersection control devices that we have in the community. Every intersection, we try and control with some sort of intersection device, a stoplight or a stop sign or whatever. And so from last year to this year, we've added two. This is associated with the West Lynn subdivision out at 20th and Eisenhower. We've added intersection controls at the West Lynn and Shady Bend Road, and also We've added intersection controls at the Westland and Shady Bend Road, and also at the Shady Bend Road and Shadow Drive. There are stop signs there. And we would ask you to authorize the, the, the annual, um, master intersection control index.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question about, uh, we'll look. There is gonna be a traffic control device eventually, or sometime in the near future, out at the intersection of Eisenhower and 20th?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
But that's not covered under, under this?
Correct. So we, so what we will do every year is come back and visit with you and ask for you to authorize them. Um, and then so, between now and next year, uh, we would anticipate that there's a traffic signal that goes there. We have the authority to install it and use it, but we just like to make sure that it's, um, on the record that it's been authorized by everybody. And so that would be next year's, uh, list.
Even though the traffic light's already installed, it's not operable now, because the road's closed.
Right.
So you, will we wait till next year to authorize it, or will you?
Right, we can do that.
It's just a, uh, administrative procedure.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, the city, uh, staff, the public works director and myself have the authority to control, control those. We just like, as a matter of record, to come and ask for, uh, the governing body once a year to make sure that we're all in agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just need a consensus?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. Okay, thank you, Chief Kitchens.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're at the consent agenda. Commissioner Wilson?
All right. I move to approve the claims for August 21st, 2021, through September 10th, 2021, in the amount of $2,228,080.80. Net amount for payroll number 17, effective, effective August 27th, 2021, in the amount